Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting of 11th February. Today's agenda includes discussion on potential Town Center Park, construction at the new garage and emergency service center behind Town Hall, ambulance organizational adjustment, some of the planning board topics for their session on 20th February, potential help from Representative Kokot with funding the water line jacking under Route 91, center school study status, some draft budgets and some other items. Just as information, we've also been holding budget hearings began yesterday. We're doing them jointly with the Finance Committee that's worked well in the past. We all hear the same thing at the same time. No decisions or anything, at this point, we're just listening for understanding. Got several announcements before we continue. Do want to recognize the DPW staff for their work during the recent snowstorms. Did an excellent job. In fact, we even got some DPW fan letters from residents. So, thanks, well done. Pleased to report that on the 29th of January, the Massachusetts School Board voted to approve the roof, window, and door replacement project for Smith Academy. Depending on the audited cost, the grant ranges for us is about $1.1 to $1.2 million. Of course, the town still, and it will at Town Meeting, have an opportunity to approve its cost share. It's about $2.3 million total. There should be a notice out, there's a number of vacancies or positions coming open on various Town Boards and Committees, and I'd ask anyone interested, please take a look at those. There's multiple opportunities for people who want to contribute to the community. Planning Board has a public hearing on the 20th of February at 7:30. Agenda includes some zoning changes on Elm Street and West Street, amendment to the zoning bylaws on medical marijuana, mixed-use development, noise regulation, deleting right-of-light, right-of, as-of-right citing for solo electric co-ops, a number of issues, some of them somewhat emotional to some folks, so it's your opportunity to provide some input before things move on to Town Meeting. Finally, just on a personal note, a note of thanks to Mr. Greg Gaggen. Greg headed up our ambulance function for some 25 years, or he's been serving on the ambulance for some 25 years, and the 7th of February, effective the 7th of February, he resigned from that position, has moved a little further away. We'd certainly wish him the best and want to thank him for his many, many years of volunteer service to the community. Just before we begin, anyone here for public forum? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Hi.
Give your name and street address. Use the mic, please.
My name's David Biddle, and I live at 96th Bridge Street here in Hatfield. And I'm a friend of the River Valley Market, which Tom Bradbury is here to represent them. They have a parking problem. They have 92 parking spaces approximately, and they have 50 employees. So, they made the deal with their employees to park somewhere else and then ferry them back into the work spot. That worked fine with the Big Y for a few months, but the Big Y kicked them out two weeks ago. Corporate came down and said, "No, we're not doing this." So, they're looking for another spot to put their, have their employees park and ferry them up to the River Valley Market. We checked in here with Hatfield, and Tom talked to the building inspector about it. Do you have anything else to add to what I've said?
Well, hi. My name's Tom Bradbury. I'm from Northampton, and I'm here as a store manager from River Valley Market up the road. And the only thing, I did talk with Stanley, and he did say that there is a Town Bylaw of no commercial parking in Hatfield. We have a couple spots we identified, and we worked out with the landowners where we were going to park there and ferry the people back and forth. But Stanley told me that this bylaw exists where there's no commercial parking in Hatfield. So, I'm here representing River Valley Market to see if there's any way we could do something for that. Stanley did say that there was no way to appeal or any variances, but I was hoping that maybe there is.
Is he coming?
Hi. Before I do make a comment, I guess I would have to sit down with Stanley and the Zoning Board of Appeals and the zoning board itself to see what, if in fact, anything can be done. But I do believe he is right, there is no parking allowed.
I did look through the bylaws. They were a little confusing, so I just wasn't quite sure.
Well, we'd certainly be willing to take it on and examine the issue and-
Oh, thank you.
And provide you some feedback.
Thank you.
If it requires a bylaw change, that's something that could be addressed at our upcoming Town Meeting.
Great. Can I give you my business card?
Absolutely.
Okay. I will.
We'll take it on and-
That was Stanley's suggestion, was to bring it up to Town Meeting, and when that comes up in the summer, and see if you can change the bylaw in the Town Meeting. He said it was unlikely, but it could be brought up, it could be addressed that way. Would be the simplest-
I'm not sure you're going to get an immediate relief. Our Town Meeting's not even until the second Tuesday in May, so.
Yeah, I'm thinking, you know, maybe the bylaw could be changed to allow something like this by a special permit.
Which would need a Planning Board hearing.
Right. Right.
So, that could be done in the meantime?
No, no, no. I mean, that would be the bylaw change.
The bylaw change would have then allow a special permit-
Yeah.
And then you'd go for a special permit.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, a year from now.
I know things take some time.
But we got goodwill here, anyway. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for open forum? No? Okay. Mr. Cox, Peter?
Yes, I'm actually going to hand it off to Rich Abbott. He'll be close.
And the subject is the Smith Academy Park?
Yes, I'm Rich Abbott on the Open Space Committee. And a couple issues came up. We wanted to get sort of Boyd's direction on these issues, and also just to give you an update of where the project stands. So, as you recall, back in last Town Meeting in May, Town Meeting approved $9,500 of CPA funds for a redesign and cost projection for the Smith Academy Park. So, during the summer and the fall, the committee met and came up with a request for a proposal that went out in November with Paul's help. And by December 31st, which is the due date, we had eight landscape designers who responded to that. The committee met at the beginning of January and voted to interview three of them. And on January, I think it was 22nd, the three invited designers gave a proposal, and we interviewed them. And then last week, at our meeting, we voted to recommend that the town hire Martha Lyon, landscape designer from Northampton, for the project. So, that's where we stand now. The sort of the projected timeframe is that hopefully with the contract to be signed, and I'm not sure whether the designer initiates that, or the town has its own contract, but I guess we can discuss that.
We can talk about that.
Yeah. Once that is signed, we would sort of have a initial meeting with the designer probably in March to start getting into the design itself, and ultimately, hopefully, by May have a three or so alternative designs to be presented to the board, to the committee. And then perhaps sometime in June, actually have a final design. So, the, one of the issues would be, once we get to that point of the final design, at this point, the understanding with the trustees is just a sort of verbal understanding with no, no actually firm terms. And so, it seems that to go forward at that point and try to investigate funding possibilities, we'd want to have something in place. I mean, we don't anticipate a lease actually being signed until, you know, we have funding and everything's going forward, but we thought in the interim, there could be some memorandum of understanding or something to that extent, that everyone's on the same page in terms of what that lease would, would look like. And we're assuming, you know, a long-term lease with a nominal amount. So, the question is, once we get to that point, which I'm thinking is around June, how do we proceed to start that document going? Do we, you know, get the town attorney involved, or how?
Well, can we back up just a second?
Sure.
On the contract, you need to be working with, please work with Paul. I mean, you, the committee's not authorized to enter into contracts, but you can work with Paul on the substance of the contract. With respect to the trustees, I believe the record will show that they've addressed this issue when it first came up. And, well, I can't say that it was documented in terms of an MOU or an MOA, but, you know, we would not even have got this far had we got a green light from the Smith Academy trustees about the potential for a park here. So, but again, that's an MOA, and we could have our council help draft the text.
Okay. That's fine. I just, and they did, in their initial sort of letter to us, they did indicate that, you know, that they're on board, and they'd be willing to lease the land to the town. It just seemed to me it was getting-
For example, we have some agreement with them. We pay, what, a dollar a year? Because some of the parking out here-
Right.
Is on the old Smith Academy property, not on town property.
So, yeah, I guess when the time comes, I'll just follow Paul and see if there's sort of another sort of level of documentation that we should have, and perhaps it's not necessary, but-
Well, faces change.
Right.
People change. It's better really to document it, and frankly, I'd recommend you do it early rather than late.
Yeah.
Ahead of a lot of other work.
Yeah.
So, please, please work with Town Administrator, and let him review the contracting action that you have underway, and lay out kind of the basic elements of the agreement you're looking for from the trustees, and we can get council drafted out and submitted to them for their approval.
Sure. The other question that came up during sort of our, the committee's meeting to come up with a request for proposal, and was also, came up during the interviews with the designers, they, a couple of them asked this question, and that is, to what extent, if any, would the parcel land that is part of Town Hall next to Smith Academy Park be incorporated to any, into any design plan? You know, whether that be just vegetation, walkway passing through? So, the parcel boundary is probably like 30 to 40 feet beyond Town Hall. And so, I guess the, the discussion sort of went around, well, that sort of part of Town Hall, that grass there is kind of a dead space, and there's not really too much going on there. And, you know, if the whole area of park and that area design was enhanced by incorporating it, would that be a good thing to do? Would that be something that, you know, the selectmen could support? It could be, you know, a matter of vegetation or walkway? Or, one of the things that we're envisioning in the park would be some sort of structure for outdoor performances, you know? And I understand there's, you know, setback requirements and all that. I mean, is that something that the structure would actually, you know, be coming, you know, into the Town Par, you know, the Town Hall parcel or, you know? So, that was sort of the question that was thrown out, and, you know, we see the positive of it, but I'm sure there's sort of pitfalls of that, too. And sort of just wanted to get some idea of what, if that's a road we should be going down, and, I mean, it's not asking for any commitment because we're going to have design alternatives, so people will have a chance to look at things, but-
I have an opinion, but do you have any?
No, I haven't.
I think, I think you ought to include it in your, developing your concept and your Clearly, if it's not any permanent structure, I don't think there'd be any problem at all because we have no, there's no near-term over the next six-year plan or 10 years for any addition going out this way. So, you ought to incorporate, so, I mean, we're not going to put a barrier between-
Right.
Build a big fence between the two. It's, it all needs to connect.
So, in terms of perhaps any overflow vegetation or walkway, that might work, and I guess-
The walkway, definitely, yeah.
The other bigger question would be if, if this structure, gazebo, whatever we come up with, if the design shows that this thing's sitting, bordering, you know, right on the parcel property, or is that a direction we want to stay away from? Because I understand that that, you know, with any type of structure crossing a parcel line, is, am I running it to some sort of zoning issue?
That I'm not sure of.
I don't know.
I mean, it is still, it's town-owned land, but there could be an issue with it, so-
Right.
That would be something that probably your committee would have to take up with, with the building inspector.
Okay.
We could address those things as you, as your design options mature.
Okay.
But for planning purposes, suggest that you plan to incorporate this area, and then we could work out and modify accordingly.
In the past, well, as of this fall, you'd see that area mowed, this area not mowed. Two days later, this area's mowed, that's not mowed. So, all you see is this, you know? So, I would like to see it consistent. So, I think that's the way to go.
Okay. That's good. That's pretty much, we just wanted to get some feedback and-
I hope you're, I hope you're all looking at what the UMass Landscape Architecture students came up with for his potential, as one-
Yeah.
Kind of approach. I mean, they opened up that whole middle and pushed things out to the side, and so the walkway through there was really very attractive.
Right.
So, you're going to work with Town Administrator on contracts-
Right.
MOA or MOU with the, with the Smith Academy trustees, and as a planning assumption, plan to incorporate the area adjacent in the overall design.
Okay.
So, the committee is ready to recommend to the Board of Selectmen, the designer?
Right. We, we voted on one. I'm just making some phone calls today with references, just to tie it all in. I would get you, you know, or Peter would get you a memo, you know, and we would give you the RFP and the proposal, and so, and we're hoping to do that by the end of the week, so-
Okay.
We have selected someone.
I mean, the selectmen will need to vote.
Right.
But we're not ready for that yet.
Right.
Okay.
He's doing a due diligence right now, so.
And I think our-
But we have a meeting-
The 25th.
25th.
Yeah. I think our timeframe is somewhat flexible, you know? We're thinking that, we originally hoped for a sort of May final design, but I think with, the way things are going, it's more maybe June, and that might give the architect a chance to see the property without snow on it.
Any else?
That's it, yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think it'd be very attractive when it's done.
Yeah, we hope.
Spruce up to center here. Mark, Public Safety Building? Good morning. Over to you.
I'm good. You, you want me just to give you a synopsis, or do you want to ask some questions about the project?
No, go.
Give us what you got.
Okay. My name's Mark Gilat. I'm a Hatfield resident. I live on Elm Street. I'm the architect for the police-fire ambulance project behind Town Hall. That project's been ongoing since late last summer. And just as a, as a kind of recap, it, it involves about 1,500 square feet of renovated space for the fire department and ambulance, and about 700 square feet of renovated or newly-added office space and workspace for the police department. The project is very close to substantial completion now, which means that the police, ambulance, and fire departments could occupy the building. That doesn't mean that the project will be totally finished. It just means that it would be legally occupiable and workable, and that substantial completion date is, I'd say, approaching in the next two weeks. The final completion date usually occurs about a month after that. There'll be a punch list, which are the final remaining items for the project, which are usually small items, usually touch-up finish items, maybe any corrections and minor pieces of the project. And so, that punch list, as we call it, will be drawn up by myself and the engineers on the project, who are the plumbing and mechanical and HVAC. And we'll go through and make sure that all those punch list items are acted upon and completed, and then the project, the final completion of the project will be signed, and the final release of the funds will be given at that point. So, that's pretty much the summary.
Any open issues?
I mean, there's, there's all kinds of little issues, really, you know, with any project, but really, nothing of any major import. I mean, the project is behind schedule. I think that was kind of the main, the main issue with the project. There have been some issues with pieces added to the project, small electrical pieces and small plumbing pieces, a new drain put in for a future sink location, some additional electrical items for a smart board for the fire department. So, these things have been, you know, relatively small, I think, considering the scope and size of the project. The change orders on the project right now are at about $6,300.
Oh.
And on a project that's a half a million, it's a reasonable, you know, one and a half to 2%. We expect a couple more items changed to the contract to be forthcoming for things that were requested to be added to the project. Small things like an electric strike in the police department to buzz someone in, and a couple of other small items, so.
I'm in.
Yeah. So, you know, it's been, I think everyone has been, you know, the fire, police, and ambulance departments, and Paul and DPW and Phil have all come to all the meetings, and they, they can tell you kind of how it's gone in general, but I think we've had a good group working together and in a good, strong effort to try to complete this project. So, we're almost there.
Well, it's a major step forward for police, fire, ambulance compared to where they are now. Fire in the old coatroom, and police in the old girls' shower area. It's, you know, it's a step up in terms of working space. It gives us a common area, not just for fire department, but for all departments to use for training opportunities, and it's being set up that way. It's an area to be used potentially as an emergency ops center, so we've got one common place that we can always go to and not throw the high school, or grammar, or elementary school administrator out of her office down at the HES. I mean, it's just a, a good step forward and a good investment for the town, and appreciate everybody's help making it work, coming together.
Yeah.
Particularly yours, Mark.
It is practically brand-new space. I mean, we talk about it as being renovated space, but the only existing portion of that project really was the shell of the building, so both departments are, all three departments are getting brand-new space.
And I'd like to credit Mr. Damski for his notion about, maybe we ought to take advantage of an opportunity here when the old shed fell down, create some space for these folks. It was his, his initial idea, let's take advantage and build it out for them.
Thank you.
Anybody else for?
I just have one question, Mark, because here, is the gas meter set now?
The last I looked, Phil, was that the gas meter was installed, and that the plumbing contractor, as of last Friday or Thursday, was going to show up with Berkshire Gas and make that final connection. Now, I haven't actually gone out there, nor have I verified, but I did-
I just wanted to make sure because there was some correlation with that.
I did follow up on your email, and both the plumber and Berkshire Gas were committed to being there at the same time on the same day, so.
I don't know if that happened, that's what I'm saying.
I don't know if it happened either. I don't know.
They said it did.
They said it did, okay.
They said yes.
So, that's a good thing.
Yes.
Yep.
Not, I guess, for you, but what is the projected date to move in? Move out of here and move in there?
Oh.
Mark says you potentially could occupy in another two weeks or so. I mean, is everything else all set up? Phones, computers?
No.
Those arrangements made?
Working. So, we're, we're processing any, the computers.
But, no. I mean, you know, you know, typically, there is, you know, a date set for substantial completion, and we have not been able to nail that down, so it's kind of speculation at this point, so we're just going to have to wait and see.
I think the police department has, has things on order as well, furnishings and-
Yeah.
Some lockers and, that have not arrived yet. That's just, that's not official, but that's what I've heard.
That's true. It's all on order, so.
And the other items that are on order that-
Yes.
Okay. You had, okay. Mark, thank you very much. Appreciate your effort.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Next topic is ambulance organization, organizational adjustment. I mentioned Mr. Gaggen had resigned, and it's an opportunity to look at structure and how it operates, and Steve is here today to talk to a proposal or a suggestion.
It is an option. This is the, this would be the time, if we were going to make any changes. The ambulance existed for, geez, probably over 30 years, in its entity to this, which is basically its own department. Over time, we've gone through a lot of different people, and it's had its positives and benefit negatives in terms of being a separate department. We are, well, we will be in, in whatever six months, will be the only standalone ambulance service, municipal ambulance service in this region. Because in time, basically every other community that's had an ambulance department that's been separate from fire has, has joined them. And most of the reasons is that, well, the number of volunteers and people available has, has dwindled. And what they found is that it's the same people. It's the same people in the fire department that's on the ambulance. And then it comes down to, when you have an incident, you know, well, who? Or you have a training, who's supposed to be working for who? And who's supposed to be where? Over the years, we've run into conflict here of having two different departments and two different department heads over the, I've been, I think I get 16 years on the ambulance here. And over time, we've run into stuff like that. We've overcome it. It's been a simple issue here. Other counts have been more complex. But even nowadays still, we have a car accident. And realistically, one person could say, hey, I want you to go in the ambulance. Somebody else could say, hey, I want you to go on the fire truck. So it leads to the fact that basically every employee we have, short of one, on the ambulance right now is also on the fire department. So it's an opportunity, you know, this is an opportunity to say, okay, we'll bring them all under one roof. We're already all under, going to be under one roof, you know? And we'll bring everybody to the same department. We'll restructure a little bit, where the chief will be able to handle some duties, and obviously someone's still going to have to oversee the ambulance option. It should work. It works other places. Because of the staff that's already basically a part of both departments, you know, the transition would really be seamless. I don't, you know, the question with the budget yesterday was, what's the, you know, what's the budget impact? And I don't know. I do, I can tell you one thing. It's not going to cost more. You know, what would be the cost savings that we realize? I don't know. It would obviously take probably the first year to figure that out. We've never done that. But over time, we've put departments together in town. I think most of the time, I think it's become successful and consolidating. And it has the support of all the people, all of the people doing the work. Everyone says, why don't we just work together? Regulatory-wise, it really makes no difference. We still have to meet the same regulatory requirements. We don't share the same software package, but in terms of electronic reporting, but we're actually, we might share the same software package. Again, there should be some cost savings there, but that's going to happen whether we join or not. And so I guess, you know, we're growing. We've added two new people now this year. We're hoping to add more. Part of this is that, well, part of the people that I'm trying to recruit are people who are already active in the fire department, you know? If I can, and I think if they're together, it's the same department, there might be a little bit more of a, you know, effort to join. In moving forward, we could still take on people who would be sole EMT. Somebody wants to join the ambulance, we're always looking for people. We're actually looking, we're looking to put people in classes and support them in training, irregular citizens. But with that, they could still come on board, and they would just be single role. They would function as only EMTs. They would still work under the fire department. It would work, it does work. Other communities do it well, and it works out. I know we've done it the same way for 30 years. But I think that over time, people have seen that putting them together sometimes pays off, especially when you're dealing with a limited number of volunteers. If we had people coming out of the woodwork, if I had a 15, 20-person department and the chief had 20 people, that would be wonderful. But we don't. We've probably got the same 30. You know, same 25, so.
Chief, why don't you come up? The proposal on the table is to merge under emergency ambulance function under the fire department. You'd be the gaining organization, the head. Any comments?
No.
Pro con or?
No, I'm for it. I'm for it. I mean, originally, when the ambulance came into town, I was on the fire department back then, and I was one of the original EMTs. But I was against combining the two departments. And one of the reasons was what Stephen alluded to was, you know, we wanted to make sure that if you wanted to be an EMT, that's all you had to be, was an EMT. Or if you wanted to be a firefighter, you can be a firefighter. You didn't have to mesh together. I mean, you know, you didn't have to do both. That's what I wanted to say. So, and I think it, I think it needs to carry on that way, that you don't need to be, if you join the fire department and you don't want to be an EMT, that's fine. If you want to be an EMT and not be a firefighter, that's fine, even though we work together a lot, so. But, you know, and then also, you know, you still need an ambulance manager, somebody to manage the day-to-day functions of it, you know, the regulatory stuff, especially gets really bogged down sometimes, right?
Yeah, so we'd still manage to make it function. It would just work underneath, you know, the chief would handle some duties, you know? The chief would still handle, it would be joint payroll, something like that, be joint payroll. You know, maybe some supplies, obviously some sharing of some joint supplies and some terms of stuff. And obviously someone still hands the regulatory stuff and the quality control stuff, which would be, have to be someone who would, you know, handle that stuff, just report to Bill, hey, you know, to keep work together on it. And I think, and Bill and I spoke, and we think we could work that out. We think that's doable.
Does the ambulance manager have to be a certain level? You know, we're going to two-tier versus the three-tier.
The answer is that someone does. Someone has to be of the highest level that we operate at.
Does it have to be the manager? Bill is not, for example.
No. No. It doesn't have to be the manager, per se. But at this point-
So if we had, if Bill was the manager, Dool had it as the manager?
You win it. So the answer is yes and no. It's a tough one. So regulatory-wise, the manager has to understand the regulatory stuff-
Exactly, exactly.
-that relates to both the ALS and BLS. The manager has to understand the quality control stuff as it relates to both. And so it is difficult if the person who, you know, the, it's a title. It's all it is, you know? So it is difficult.
So as long as there's someone there-
Yes. So if we said, if we said that, you know, he is the fire chief, he oversees the ambulance, that the ambulance falls in his department, and he dedicates this person is to take, is to be in charge of the EMS function, ambulance function. That person would be all the stuff and should have those, and should have that stuff, and should have experience in doing that stuff, so.
You answered one big question that I had. I'm the one who raised business about the financing and all that, but the costs and benefits. But earlier, I had understood that there had been some resistance among ambulance members to becoming, to be coming joined with the fire department. But you're assuring me that that's no longer-
Everyone's employed, everyone who's currently in the ambulance is already a part of the fire department, except one individual who's actually moving. He's moving, he's moving out, moving to Oxford, so.
Do you have any questions?
We haven't seen him in months.
Well, I guess my only question is now, all the firefighters, they take a first-aid course?
First responder.
First responders, yeah.
And CPR.
Now, seeing like the first responder can actually drive an ambulance?
Yes.
Is that still right?
And what we've actually done, and this is part of the thing that the chief and I have worked on over the last year, is that we actually send the first responders to more medical calls in town. We find, found that, in instance, we honest, we've had two cardiac arrests in town where we sent first responders also, giving us more hands. And in two cases, the first responder was two minutes away, both cases. So we have actually started, we do first responder training together anyway, sometimes. And so this, obviously, everyone can still work together. They have to drive the ambulance. We still have to have two EMTs in the ambulance.
Right.
But, oh yeah, we've used them. There's some of those guys.
That was my only question.
Yeah, we probably have half a dozen guys that'll jump in the driver's seat like that if they need to. Or jump in the back. We've had that too.
Right.
Is there a motion to integrate the ambulance function under the Hatfield Fire Department? So moved. Second, any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What, I'll do it as a motion. Is there a motion to direct the fire chief to develop a plan of action on integrating the ambulance function into the fire department to include budget, staffing, training, et cetera?
So moved.
Second, any other discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Fair enough. Here we have an opportunity. We're moving toward budget time. For Bill, just take a look at the ambulants and tuck it all in, all the training, supplies, the whole thing. Come back with how you're going to do it. Pick a date in terms of one you want to execute that's reasonable, that you've got it together.
Okay, all right.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have to go anywhere?
I'm going downstairs to get a, some pump, I guess, is down. And the smell, might be a smell of gas or something.
Well, I'm wanting to, I mean, if, we're going to be talking about this, um-
The door.
While you, while you open the door, I'll go take care of the gas.
All right.
Okay, oh, all right, all right. Okay. This is ancient history. Firehouse door.
I'm looking to put it behind us.
Okay, what's on the table?
Well, I guess, first of all, I guess we were informed that some, the project that is going on out in front, they won't continue in or-
There's some issue with the recreation committee with that, with the structure over the stairs at the door. I mean, it was related to me that they consider it a safety hazard. I don't know about that. I mean, it does, it looks terrible.
I agree.
For starters, there's, you know, paint hanging from the ceiling. There was discussion about, you know, loose bricks. And Jan and I went over there. I didn't see any loose bricks, but-
They look like they're loose, but they're not.
Yeah, yeah. So anyways, Selectman Adamski and I went over there and, I mean, because the, the issue with the building inspector is the door does not meet code, so the door needs to be replaced. And the structure over the door, I guess, is leaking. So that needs to be fixed. So when Jan and I went over there, Jan said, okay, let's replace the door and let's tear down the structure to about knee level and be done with it.
Do you have money to do it this year?
Do that much, I would say yes.
Is there a rough design or something that someone can operate with, or do you-
Well, I mean, that's kind of what I'm-
I thought Bill came online saying that's what he was-
That's pretty much what you want, right?
What he wanted anyway.
All I was looking for was to have the door replaced.
Well, no, I mean, that little vestibule, that's, you know, whatever-
It looks like-
I mean, I definitely want to do something with that, but, I mean, as far as putting a porch out there, I really don't-
No, I don't even know where that idea, the porch, came from. It didn't come from above.
I mean, I could see putting a little, you know, like a little roof over that, you know, like, if we cut that, those two walls down, like I said, to like knee height, maybe even a little higher, right? Cap it with concrete so it looks decent, with a couple posts, and just a little roof over it.
That's fine. That's our second egress. That's, you know, all I was looking for is to get the door replaced.
You want a window in the door, I mean, you know, so it looks decent.
Yeah, yeah.
You know? All right, so.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of the motion. Is there a motion to direct the, Director DPW to develop a design simply to remediate the building inspection issues, safety issues, and install a new door, repair the, or replace the, what do you call it, the overhang?
The overhang, right.
And what are we doing with the side of the bricks?
Cut them down so if somebody's walking out the steps, they're not going to, because we'll have to put railings in. So if you leave those two brick walls- Cut down so it's safe.
And make it, make it compliant with safety code. It's not a very good motion, but is there a second?
I'll make, yeah.
There's a second for discussion.
Before the discussion, to execute, not the design, but to execute the project?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, not the design.
No, we were saying go do it.
Because we don't want to design it. I mean, we're just going to put the door in.
No, we're, yeah.
Okay.
Don't knock those walls down.
Yes, that's what we're going to execute.
Get it done.
Because I'm about sick of hearing it.
Okay, there's a second. Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm in.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go take care of the stores. Oh, planning board agenda. I mentioned this. Well, for two reasons. One, for the general public, so they'll show up at town meeting and bring a number of issues forward when we've had an opportunity to comment on them at one of these planning board hearings. That's number one. Number two, we need to respond, if we have any comment, to the planning board on the agenda, on any of the items. Again, talking about changing the districts of two parcels from industrial zoning to business zoning on Elm Street. We thought that was just an error somewhere.
That was an error.
So we don't have any, we don't have any. Changing the district from rural residential to light industrial on a parcel on 117 West Street.
I believe we did.
We don't, we don't have any-
We don't have a problem with it, but I think it was brought up to us, and the three of us voted that it was okay with us, so.
Yeah, okay. They're going to discuss and look at a new section for the noise regulation. Medical marijuana. New section on, for medical marijuana, where it might go. Mixed-use development, remember that's the one that came up last year? And actually, there's some misinformation about what they're talking about here. Talking about guiding development and setting some standards for development and permitting things like, for example, a barber living above his barber shop in some little area. It's not major residential development by any stretch. Solar-electric co-op, changing the zoning bylaw table of use section. My only, I have one comment on that. I don't know if you had any, but whatever they do there, we don't want to undercut one of the five elements that we were required to comply with to be designated a green community regarding asset-right siding on solar things. So what, whatever, I guess that would be our only comment. I would propose that we make a comment that, on this particular item, our concern is that we not do something that, adopt a change that would affect our designation as a green community, one of the five criteria of being designated a green community. All right? And if others are interested, please show up on the 20th.
On that-
Say your, say your piece, yes.
That medical marijuana, I mean, they're, basically, we're just looking for a place to put it. If, in fact, if somebody ever wanted to apply for a license to grow and sell, doesn't mean we're going to have it.
Oh, no, 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 no.
So I just want to, I just want to get that. Because there's only going to be so many per county.
The state has to license them all.
Right, right. But I think there's only going to be so many allowed per county.
Yeah, yeah. I can't remember what the number is, but-
I just, I'm just for townspeople.
Yeah, all this, all this does is, number one, set up, you know, okay, where they can go, and also sets up additional regulations, you know?
Pertaining to its operation. Pertaining to its operation.
Yeah, pertaining to the operation.
If, if and when it ever... Okay, so, would, add that, and we need to respond.
Got that down, okay.
Okay. Transportation bond bill?
Yeah, nothing to report there, but just to recap, the $400,000 that is required to go under Route 91 for the water transmission line has been inserted into the latest transportation bond bill by Representative, Representative Kocot. I got an email from him several weeks back saying, "Let's talk about strategy to get this project actually funded," because, just because it's in the bond bill, doesn't...
That's like an authorization, not appropriation.
It's an authorization, the money's not there, we need to get the money there. So I responded to his email saying, "Well, let's get together within the next couple of weeks to discuss this," and saying that, you know, "We would want our engineer at that meeting as well," but I have not heard back from him, so...
Well, why don't you...
I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna follow up today.
Okay. Phil, DPW?
I just have a couple things. I just handed into your packet, the water, the sewer abatement for pool liner replacement. I'm recommending that, the board vote in favor of the abatement of $101.70 for Gregany and Chase at 58 Bridge Street. They complied with the water and sewer regulations with the pool liner, we have all the documentation, and that's the sewer side being abated, so I recommend that, that be approved.
There is a motion to approve the abatement, $101.77 for 58 Bridge Street.
So moved.
Second, any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The other thing is that I, in your packet, I put the latest application for access to the state highway in regards to the water transmission main, the jacking project. We did submit the application to Mass DOT and we're waiting approval. I did have a conversation with some people there, and I don't think it's gonna be any problem, I mean, it's just a basic access to jack under 91, so that's in their hands as we speak, as one of the permitting requests that we need from them. The borings were done, so we needed that to do the borings, and this is for the jacking project, so, just a little cup of tape there.
Hey, we, we also, we're going back on the railroad permitting to extend the date of that?
Yes.
Do you know how that's, we didn't, don't expect any issue, but...
We don't expect any issues.
Okay, but we still haven't heard?
We haven't heard from the railroad, no.
We went through...
We do not want that to lax.
We went through, we got the permit to jack under the railroad on Cheston Street, but due to this little hiccup with the jacking under 91.
So we filed for an extension.
Filed for an extension of that.
For that permit. And the other thing that I did receive from DEP is the recycling numbers along with a rebate check of $1,633.95 for recycling from July to December in a town like Hatfield with 73.09 ton of recycling. So, we received that check, it's in the Treasurer's Department now, as we receive $15.67 for every ton that we recycle, so, you know, I can't encourage it enough, it brings monies back into the town, so...
Anything else?
That's about it.
Okay. Paul? Budget?
Yeah, well, I was hoping to have a draft budget for you today, but it's not ready yet.
Close.
But we're not quite there yet. But I got an email yesterday, and I, which I'll give to you. As you may recall, we were, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission approached us some months ago, our hazardous mitigation plan will be expiring, and they were going to be submitting a grant to FEMA for funding to update various towns' hazardous mitigation plans. So I just got this email yesterday from PVP-PC saying they, they have in fact received the funding to update the plans for the various towns that were interested, including Hatfield.
Great.
So, and they're, they're having a kickoff meeting on February 20th at the PVP-PC offices, but I'm not sure who was involved with the initial go-around, I'm not...
Emergency management, that should be...
Be emergency management, Cindy, anybody else?
Bill, Bill Eldon.
Okay.
Well, it has a variety of, the activity ought to be, the staff activity ought to be responsible is emergency management. It's hazardous mitigation, it's...
Yeah.
But it includes, for example, DPW, because some of the stuff had to do with the toe of the dike in certain areas. Some had to do with the dam off Bridge Street. I mean, there's a whole variety of people affected, but the activity, staff activity pulling all that together ought to be DPW. Coincidentally, I asked Bill to set up a date to review with us status of actions on the hazardous mitigation plan, kind of where we are on what's done, what still needs to be done.
Okay.
But that's, that's clearly their bailiwick.
Okay, all right, and, without, the, the Emergency Management Committee, I guess that's a fairly recent creation.
No, it's been around for a while.
I mean, were they involved with this initially?
This does staff function, it ought to be in the...
Staff function, okay.
Fire Department, the emergency management.
That answers that. So, that's good news, I'll let everybody know about this. And the only other thing that I have is, you know, the Center School Study. In your packet, I gave you some progress reports, so, you know, that's, that's moving right along. You know, and the consultants, you know, were instructed to, you know, let's, let's examine every possible option, you know, including tearing it down and doing nothing. So we're still in that process, but as they have been doing their work, you know, many of the options have, you know, beginning to fall by the wayside. At this stage of the game, it does in fact look like some sort of housing would be the most feasible use of that building. One of the problems with it is that most of the interior walls are load-bearing, so trying to reconfigure it, you know, in any kind of drastic way, you know, just is, is not possible, so, you know, it doesn't look like, you know, it would, and there's also another constraint is parking. There probably is enough parking spaces there for, you know, maybe, you know, nine units or something like that. But more, anything other than housing would require additional parking, which would mean, you know, having to take some, some property from the playing fields, and, you know, that, that remains, you know, unknown. You know, they've looked into, you know, various sorts of subsidized housing, and there has been some interest there, but, and discussing this with various developers, the cult, you know, they, the developers have said that, "Well, if I was to do something on that site, I need a minimum, absolute minimum of 40 units." Because when they do these projects, they're looking at various funding sources for the subsidies, so they need, you know, a half a dozen here, a half a dozen there, in order to make the whole thing work, so, you know, that would mean building out onto the playing fields, which I, I don't think is, is, is an option, so that, that particular option seems to be falling by the wayside as well. But, so, we're making progress, that's kind of where...
So you're looking at what, roughly nine, nine units, you're telling me?
Something like that.
Now, are we talking, expanding like the capoong over there?
No, I, I think, yeah, if some, yeah, if somebody wanted to do something like that, that gets into the issue with, they need 40, they need 40 units in order to make it work, and that was an absolute bare minimum, the, I was told that, you know, preferably 60 would work. So, nothing, nothing's definite yet, but that seems to be the direction we're going in.
Well, just a personal comment, the contractor ought to come back with, "These are the best potential uses," and then we take it to town meeting, like we've had, we've been, we've been there for rental, they said, "Okay, try rent, that didn't work." We've been there to try and sell, they said, "No." Been there, tried to use it for town purposes, town offices, that type of thing, said, "No." So, what, at this point, you know, the only other option is tear it down, so, we need the contractor to come in with, "What is the best potential use?" And then, "Here are the implications," and then just put it out there, because we can't have it remain vacant.
No, well, it'll...
Year after year after year, despite the fact that they've noted in their report, it's in excellent condition.
Yeah.
Surprisingly excellent condition.
But to follow up on that, it's still, you know, in talking with the architect, the building is in still good condition, but it's reaching a turning point. If it's left vacant much longer, it's really gonna start to deteriorate quickly.
Well, they just need to come in with the best option, the professional judgment, and let town meeting decide.
And as part of the study too, you know, we will have actual costs of, okay, what, what are our costs to do nothing, what's the cost to tear it down, what's gonna be the cost to renovate it to this, that, or the other thing? So we've got, you know, when we go to town meeting, we'll have some real numbers. So that's, yeah, that's all I've got to report on, on that.
Any other new business? New business, no?
Nope.
We need that report of integrating, which shouldn't be particularly complicated, integrating Fire Department, the ambulance into the Fire Department, pretty soon, because it ought to, we ought to have the budget as one budget going forward.
Yeah, I'll get together with Bill.
Merging the two, it shouldn't be that hard.
No.
And then, related to budgets, as, as I mentioned in the introductory comment, we've been meeting, doing the budget hearings jointly with the Finance Committee, we're meeting again this afternoon, but we need to close on a date where we, the Board of Selectmen, at least close on our position on the issues. What are we gonna do about salary adjustment requests, if anything? What are we gonna do, what's our position on COLA, if any? And so on, so, and then, then we need also the date with, follow-on date with the Finance Committee to, to go over that, so... When, for example, are you gonna be done? When, and I know all this dumps at you. That's your job, and you're a hero.
That's right.
But, you know, the HR Committee, any recommendations from them about organism, about salary adjustments, phased salary adjustments, any, all this needs to come together now.
Yeah, well, we have another, we have another HR Committee scheduled for next week, and, I mean, I, there isn't that much to figure out, I think we'll probably, you know, know where we're, where we're going at that meeting, and, and the, the budget spreadsheet is almost together, there's a glitch in there, which I haven't been able to find yet, but I've been in contact with Louise, she's gonna help me out with it. You really need at least two pairs of eyes looking at it all the time, 'cause it's easy to, for mistakes to appear, 'cause everything's, you know, it's an Excel spreadsheet, and various pages are tied into other pages, and once you start making changes to one, it can mess the whole thing up. But I would say certainly, you know, before the end of the month, things will come into focus, I mean, as we discussed yesterday with the Finance Committee, you know, Darryl mentioned that, well, we need to see where we stand, you know, with the budget, you know, where do we stand with, with Proposition 2 and 1/2 and the levy limit? And then we can start talking about, okay, well, we can do this, and maybe we can do that.
Well, that could be independent of, I agree, we need to look at the whole picture. There's no disagreement there, but we can go ahead and decide what we're going to do with regard to grade adjustments, if they're warranted at all. I mean, we may vary the, the amount that we, that we change, or some we could decide, we're not gonna do that.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, well, in terms of that, you know, most of the employees, their, their rates of pay fall within the ranges that the HR Committee, you know, developed, looking at comparable towns in, in the area, so there's not...
Okay.
There's not a lot of problem there.
Okay.
Where, where there are issues, you know, for lack of a better term, it's, and the department head salaries for, for the most part, but all those folks are contract employees anyways, so, it's kind of up to the individual employee to...
Well, when, when can we meet, our next meeting is on the 25th. When can we meet to go over the, the open issues that were from yesterday and from today, this afternoon, and...
Well, we can certainly on the 25th, if you want to, you know, get into it then.
Okay, let's, let's get it done, that's, just, you know, paying attention to schedule. We'll at least have our, our position down and our discussion, and then not go in cold with the Finance Committee. And how about the other folks, Board of Health, with our discussion with the Finance Committee, are they coming this afternoon?
I have not been able to get a hold of anybody, but I'm gonna call.
We need that discussion, I don't know if there's any, any others there too that...
Well, I know, the building inspector wanted to come in, but he changed his mind, but we're gonna want to sit down with him in the near future.
Okay, well, all I care about, we kind of bring all this stuff together before the end of the month, have a, have a, have a first rough cut, anyway, we can refine it later on.
Yeah.
Is there anything else?
Nothing, I think so.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Pushing to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, John.